June 12th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, June 12th. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room in hybrid fashion. This meeting's being recorded. If anyone's recording the meeting, let Jason know. In attendance, myself, Doug Moguland, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Diane Gale. CAO Steinhardt is on Zoom. Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni is here. Administrative Robin Solak is here. And it's 6 o'clock, so we have public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that's not a police chief or former police chief that would like to speak under public comments? Okay, are there any police chiefs or former police chiefs that would like to speak under public comments?
I'd like to address the Select Board.
Name an address for the record.
Mark Pernicki, 27 Sheep pasture road. I'm here to ask that the Select Board vote yes on Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022. That will give us retirees a 2% increase in our pay. That increase is not on our entire pension. It's based on a maximum amount of $18,000. So for the total, it'll be $360 per retiree if you're at the maximum. Inflation's been 6.5%. This is a 2% increase. This $360 will cover my tax increase for my property this year and my medical increase. I'm just asking the Board to keep us up with inflation. I know Granville passed this last week. I know the other towns, there's a lot of towns meeting this week with this on their agenda. So I'm here representing the retirees. I spoke into a lot of them. A lot of them couldn't be here and signed the de facto person to be here. So I just asked the Board to consider it and please vote yes.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Carl, can you hear us all right?
May I just add one thing for that?
Hang on, let's fix up the Zoom thing here first. I don't see anybody. Lieutenant Banish, are you able to hear us on Zoom?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Carl, can you hear us?
No sound here.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that can hear us? If you could just raise your hand on Zoom, using either that way or by clicking the hand raised thing? Okay, so it seems to be a Carl issue. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on Zoom that has a public comment? And now I'm unsure if it's Michelle's iPhone that raised her hand or has a public comment, so.
That came up when you asked.
I thought so, but I just want to make sure.
Sorry about that dog.
Okay.
Hello? I have no sound. I can hear you.
We can hear you. We can hear you. You can't hear us.
I need my phone on.
Okay. It's going to get a wicked bad echo.
I can hear them now too.
But through my phone or through your computer?
Um, hang up and I'll load it in.
Just when we have guests from out of town, usually this runs without a hitch. We never have a problem.
He should call in from his phone.
I can hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, there we go. May miracles never cease.
Okay.
Someday when we get.
That was the key, Joe.
Thanks for resolving that.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I just add?
Now, Mr. Chief Pernicki.
This does not cost the town any money. It is through the retirement system. So if you approve this, it doesn't come out of the town budget. It's through the financial investments that the retirement system makes. It comes out of the retirement system.
I expect we'll hear more about this as we carry the agenda tonight.
Yes, you will.
The two people to your left are nodding and shaking their heads. Okay. Okay, was there anyone on Zoom that had a public comment? Okay. What do you know? 6:05 PM, Hammond County Regional Retirement Board. Oh, man. Carl, how do you say your last? I was going to go with that. Regarding additional fiscal year 23 COLA for retirees. And I just want to note for the record, I believe we also had a letter, if it was in the file, if not, it was an email from another former retired police chief. I believe his name is Mr. Bishop. Letter was substantially similar to yours, sir. Flor, you want to come up? More than welcome. And you are?
I'm Karen Martin. I'm the Director.
Please.
My name's Carl Schmalsley. I'm the Chairman of the Hammond County Regional Retirement Board.
Okay.
I live at 85 Independence Road Feeding Hills.
And Jason Perron, Doug Moguland, Diane Gale.
I do.
Nadine Signoni, Robin Solak.
So I'm just going to reiterate some of the stuff that I have sent over the period of time, starting back in April. In July 28th of 2022, the mayor, the governor signed into the budget for the state employees and the teachers a 5% COLA on their retirement. In November of 16, 2022, the governor signed Chapter 269, the Acts of 2022, into law, which presides a local option to increase the cost of living COLA from fiscal year 2023 to up to 5% on the base of the amount pursuant to General Laws 32103. The approval of this increase occurred during fiscal year and will take effect July 1st, 2022. The Hammond County Regional Retirement Board Directors voted to approve the new local option to increase the COLA up to 5%, at 5%. According to the state law, we had to vote first. Our state legislators would not have passed this if they didn't feel it was necessary, nor the governor would have signed it. Even before the high inflation, we are currently receiving retirees, seniors difficulty in choosing purchases of medicines, put food on your table. Just think about the tremendous increase in price of eggs, meat, produce, gasoline. So we're asking for this additional 2% COLA, which, as the chief said, could be up to $360 a year. But if you're only making $12,000, it's not going to be that much. It's only going to be 2% on whatever you're earning, up to $18,000. The last two years, Social Security cost of living adjustments were 8.7% for 2022 and 5.9% for 2021. Most of the Massachusetts retirees are negatively impacted by the Social Security won't follow Elimination Division, otherwise known as the WAF. This means that if we are available to collect any Social Security, we're only getting 2/3 of what everyone else would get. So bottom line is the retirees outside got a hefty raise. Well, we only got a 3% each year on $18,000. So we had Seagull do an actuarial report and a cost analysis unfunded liability, increasing July 1st the number from 3 to 5. The increase from July 1st unfunded liability would be $5,597. So the funding schedule included from January 1st, 2022, the actuarial report reports that the funding funds actual liability of the system on June 30th, 2036, with a total of payments increasing by 8% a year through the fiscal year of 2030, then 3.75% it drops to thereafter reduced to 2036. In 2036, this is when the increase will not exceed the 3.75% in schedule. So basically what I'm saying is your funding schedule is not going to change from what is, what was accepted by the actuary that put out and by the state of Massachusetts. So in that last year would be 3 and 3/4% of your funding schedule. There is enough money in that funding schedule to cover this amount of money. So there would be no increase, and I think that's where some of the people are getting mixed up. When I said there's not going to be any increase in your funding schedule, there's not going to be. The money will be coming from this funding schedule in the last year. So your appropriation for the last year is 3 and 3/4%. The 2% would be underneath that 3 and 3/4%. When I get all done, I'll let you guys ask all the questions you want. Okay. Approximately 50% of the employees make $18,000 or less. Some of the cities and towns that have passed it around us are Barnstable County, Berkshire, Bristol County, Middlesex County, Norfolk County, Chickaby, East Hampton, Greenfield, North Hampton, Pittsfield, Springfield, West Springfield. I'm asking all the mayors and city town managers and CEOs to bring this before you and vote for the 2% increase. I'd just like to remind you that the increases in municipal municipalities currently see in the pension appropriations are covered under the unfunded liability, which was created by the state and required all retirement systems to switch from pay-as-you-go system to a funding schedule. In the mid 80s, when we were doing retirement, the employees are paying 11% towards their retirement. The towns were only paying whatever the 3% or 4% that the towns were putting in was for their retirement. They're not building, all the employees paid their whole career. The towns only started going in because of state statute in the mid 80s. So that's why your funding schedule is as high as it is. When they switched to the funding schedule system prior to this, the cities and towns made no contributions to the future pensions of the employees. The state provided no additional money to fund this mandate. Currently, the state mandates all Massachusetts retirement systems to be fully funded by 2040. The retirement board is just asking what is required by the state law. Lastly, I'd like to take care of a few rumors that have been going around. This is a one-time only. If anybody reads the law, it's very clear that it's a one-time only. It's not in the budget for any other year, and if it's not passed by the end of this, by June 30th, then it's done. I need 2/3 of the majority, which is, there's 18 units, so I need 12 cities and towns to pass it, at least. Our funding schedule is 8%, as I said before, 8% from 2023 to 2030, and it drops down after Our funding schedule is done by an actuary and approved by PARAC. And what that does is if the town of Southwick gives more raises, they hire more people, then the funding schedule goes out. And it's, that's the way, basically the nature of the beast. And I was also said that 8 is the only, is the highest percent that we can go up, which is another fallacy. Springfield, which I happen to be another, I'm the fifth member in the Springfield Board, we're paying 10%. Chickaby's paying 10%. So 8% is not the highest that we can go up if the retirement board so choose. It's 18, and like I said before, 18,000. I've had heard people talk about, doesn't matter what you're making, everybody's going to get the 8 to 2, 3, 60. It's not true. If you're making 13,000, it's 2% of 13,000, or 14,000, or whatever you are.
Up to 18,000.
Up to 18,000. And also heard that all the board members are going to get this. There's only two board members that are retired, so. And Seagull, when they did it, when we had them do the actuary, recommended to do it at the end. And that's the way most of the cities and towns are doing it throughout the state because that way there, there's no junk in appropriations. So it's not like you have to come up with money this year, next year, and the year after, because that funding schedule doesn't change until the last year, which is still going to be under the funding schedule that is proposed. So, questions?
Okay, I have one.
Okay.
You said it's not going to increase anything down the road for the town, correct?
No. What I'm saying is the funding, last year, the funding schedule is 3.75%, okay? Right now, they funded, that is the funding schedule. This money will be taken out under the 3.75. So it's not going to say, we're not going to say in that last year, we're going to go up to 5% to pay for that.
Well, my question is really on, in your memorandum from John Parsons.
Yep.
Section 2 of the Act provides that a COLA increase pursuant to this Act, this retracted to July 1, 2022, excuse, July 1st, 2022, any COLA increase in addition to any COLA previously adopted will become part of the fixed amount of retirees' retirement allowance in the same manner as all COLAs granted pursuant to Section 103.
Right. Okay. So that's why I gave, I sent all you people this material to, I know it's a lot, and it's.
I'm part of the retirement system, and I don't understand it.
If you're not familiar, yes. Okay. So the money, like I said, the money is going to come out at the end, okay? The funding schedule is set up and approved by PARAC. So can you just reiterate what the question was, though?
It just says that after this COLA goes into effect, it's also going to compound from this point forward.
Right.
So we're getting the one-time bump from the state now, but we're funding it from this point forward, the addition. That's just what I'm trying to understand.
You will be funding it as long as, and the retirement board will be funding it, but it's not going to increase your funding schedule. Okay? So whatever the funding schedule that is set up and accepted by PARAC, which I have over there, if you want to look at it.
By all means.
Will not change.
In percentages. But in percentages, it's not going to change.
Correct.
But in dollars, it is.
Right. Right. It will be changed in the last year.
And when you say that, are you saying that this is going to basically be funded now and be reduced in its last year?
It will be funded now. It has to be, they have to have the money by June 30th.
Yeah.
Okay? The payment won't be until the end of the funding schedule. Because, like I said, if, since they did it, they just did it, okay? We understand, and apparently Seagull and the rest of the cities and towns understand, that it would be a financial burden for them to come up with a percentage more increase in your funding schedule for next year or the year after. So what they have done is put.
Push it out over the long term.
Right, over the long term. Right.
It's, according to this, the 3% to 5% increase from July 2022, the liability, unfunded liability would increase by $5.5 million.
Correct. Oh, that's for the 18 cities and towns.
Correct. Not just on Southwick, but it's still, there's the net effect of this COLA, and so in 2030 something.
6.
Right. That $5 million plus whatever else is unfunded in the liability comes to essentially.
It won't come over, won't go over the 3 and 3/4% that you're already scheduled to pay. See, they schedule your payment out. You want to look at it? I can give you a copy.
I've touched this so far.
Okay. So they schedule your payment out till, it's up to 2036. So every year, right now, I can tell you, your assumption rate is going to go up 8% from now to 2030. And then it's going to drop to 20, 2, 3 and 3/4% till 2036. Okay? Now, I've had people ask me, why can't we just do it out the other way? Do like, say, like a 6% all out? Well, then you're putting, you're pushing that liability a lot farther down the road. So that's the way the actuaries did it. That's the way the state accepted it. So the bottom line is, yes, they'll be paying, I mean, nothing's for free, and we all know that. The payment will be in your last year, which is scheduled to be 3 and 3/4%. And it will not be over 3 and 3/4% because in that last year, the amount of money is going to be a lot less because obviously we don't, we can't figure out a percentage because of inflation and everything else. So they felt in the funding, in the actuary, I don't do the actuaries, it's done by a company, that your payment will be 3 and 3/4%. So it's still going to be 3 and 3/4% unless there's more, unless there's not, I mean, there's more money in that. It depends on what the raises are and your interests that we make on.
Correct. Because I was just going to make the observation that if you pay this out without additional incomes, that that's additional money that's coming out of the plan that's not invested in the market and earning returns.
Correct.
So that's really where it gets you as far as the unfunded liability, because you expect a certain rate of return on your investments. Lord only knows what the market's going to do, but having less money in there, period, is going to be effectual on the compound interest on that investment. Do you have any additional questions, Diane?
Is there already a COLA adjustment in the plan?
The 3%.
Or regular?
3% is already built in. In the 8% and the 3 and 3/4%. It's automatically built in. The 2% is obviously, it just came out with the governor doing it and, you know. So, like I said, you know, it's a lot of money, but when you're a retiree, I hate to say it, but it's, it's a cup of coffee a week. It's like $6.
That's the wrong answer. That's the wrong answer. Only because if we had, if I had a dollar, every time someone says it's only a cup of coffee.
I know it's a lot of money.
I do have another question. Of the 5.5 million, do you have any idea how much that is for Southwick? Guesstimated?
No. They don't break down any of that. It's not broken down.
But it could.
I imagine.
The actuary real. Yeah, she said that that would be a lot different because we have to do, you know, 37 towns and stuff, so. I mean, we did ask her to do it, but she said that that's.
We, actually, we asked her to do it originally.
I mean, I could go in and base, I could tell people in all the towns exactly how much that extra 2% will be for every retiree for that, you know, from the 20, you know, 22 to 23. I could easily give you that big, but the actuary part, I can't do that, but I can tell you how much that might be.
You'd have to, I'll say, gut shot. How many cities and towns are in this? In the Hammond County Retirement?
I mean, we have total of, there's, I have 38 units. You know, but there's only 19.
Well, there's only 18 voting.
Right. How many 18?
But 36, 36.
No. It's, there's 30, there's 36 units. 18 are voting people, and 18 are like housing authorities or fire districts. So those go onto the towns of the 18. So they're, so one town may have more than one, like a housing.
And in the interest of not turning this into another planning board meeting, and we're already half hour in and on the first 6:05 appointment, my point to you is that you could take that 18 units or 36 units and gut shot the math by saying how many retirees there are or how many, you know, what is our relative share of the input side of the equation to figure out how much of that $5 million is going to come back on Southwick. It's probably not a million dollars, just based on thinking of what those 18 units are, but that's the math. And that's a, I'm not going to use the word irregardless, it's not a word, regardless of this 2% and this 300 bucks per person, that's not even a topic of conversation, but it does open up the door in front of this word. We don't often talk about it, but that is a huge unfunded liability. I know I've talked to folks out of Westfield that talk about some of the unfunded liabilities with pensions and so on and so forth in other communities. It's a huge house of cards for probably a bad choice of words, but it is, you know, it's a huge risk for a lot of folks that are going to depend on that retirement in the longer term, especially people that are coming on the job today, right? That are, anyway. Do you have any other questions here?
I don't think so.
Sir?
Yes. You said something about the 8% that there's, people are assuming there's only set amounts. You mentioned Chickaby.
Yeah, Chickaby's paying, they're.
They get, so they're setting their rate.
They're setting their own rate.
We are only asking as these 18.
We're setting, we set it at 8% because we figured that is something that's tolerable. Chickaby, Springfield, like I said, are paying 10% every year.
I guess that answers my questions.
Anything else?
Yes. I want to ask Carl on Zoom. Carl, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Would you like to add in anything or ask any questions while we're here?
I think I would, I like the idea of just looking at what that would, the estimate would be to cost the town of Southwick as a member unit. And obviously, if what the other Carl said was that if there's other member units that are within our community, that would be our housing authority, and it might even be our school system employees that are not part of the Mass Teachers Association. So would that be, Karen, would that be three units in Southwick?
Well, there's Southwick Housing, and there's, I mean, I'm not sure how it's broken down. There's Town of Southwick. I know some of them are broken down with school, but yeah, that's what we, but the school, yeah, definitely. They're not mass teachers, they're paraprofessionals or not sub-teachers. They would be retirees.
Right, right. The non-teachers that don't participate in MTA.
Yes.
So that would be good if you can, you know, obviously break down what those three units look like, then that we, we'd only be, even though they would be on the hook for it financially, we could at least see what that looks like within our dollar number from that ending point so that if the, that funding schedule of the 3.75, we're going to bear that cost in the end, you know, it might also be able to help us determine whether or not that 3.75% would be lower if this were to not go through. But if Mr. Fitchellsey tells us it's going to be 3.75% either way, then that's sort of driving.
I think what they did in the 3.75%. I think what they did in the 3.75 percent is they, when you, when they, when they did it out, okay, I would say, by talking to the actuary, the 3.57 in that last year, when she said that that would cover, it would easily cover the increase for the cities and towns, so it's like, I guess, when you're paying a car bill and you pay $250 a month, but your last month, you end up paying maybe $150 because that's what it ends up being, but every month, when they give it to you, you pay that set amount, and then you get a payoff, which is less than, than that month. So they don't break it down to whatever that, they leave it at that 3.75, whatever it is at the end, it is. But, um-
Right.
We asked, we asked to have it broken down, uh, for cities and towns, each one, because we felt that was the way to go, but, um, the actuary doesn't do that, so they wouldn't do that. It would be like, I don't know if it's, I shouldn't say cost per hit, but it would be at a high expense to, to do that.
Yeah, the, the other thing I was thinking about, based upon that other number, was were they thinking that it would come from the, all the interest income and investments that Doug talked about in the portfolio management, that some of that predicated assumptions would be generating the income that was going to help pay for this bill at the end of this, what you call amortization schedule?
Yeah, I think the, uh, I think they, they anticipate X amount of dollars and, um, that, uh, when they, when they figured out what the total cost would be, um, unfortunately, uh, they didn't give us a dollar, they, you know, it's just came back and said it was not be, and, and I asked them the reason why, and the bottom line was the fact that, um, if you did turn around, uh, a lot of cities and towns don't have the money upfront, um, although 64, as of right now, I know 64, as of last week, I should say, 64 cities and towns have approved the two percent. Um, and I only know of one town that's, uh, that has not, has, has rejected it out of the 102.
So, um, Mr. Smallsy, when you say that's 63, is that some of them multiple members within one-
Oh, yeah, that's, that's including-
Regional entity, or are they 63 separate systems out of the 103 PARAC systems?
It's, there's 100, well, there's 102, then actually, there's 104, one's teachers, one state, but there's 102, uh, retirement boards, so, uh, systems. So they consider us one system, even though we carry, we have 38, uh, 36, uh, different units, so there's-
All right, all right, so, so when you say 63 have already, okay, that, that's out of 102 of the systems.
Right, out of, this was, uh, as of last Friday.
Okay.
And we have to decide by June 30?
Correct. No, no, uh, you know, we decide by, uh-
27th, I believe, by 27th at 9 o'clock. Because we have to-
That's three days less than we were told.
Um, I sent an email out to everybody because we had to the 26th, but-
We had it to the 23rd, and then we found out that some-
I understand they wanted to wait to the end, but this is a little too close to the end.
Well, it is, what, what happened was, um, we had Juneteenth, so a lot of cities and towns went to the next day, have it on Tuesday. Some decided to do it on the 26th. So we have to do, we have to have a meeting on the board if we get two thirds.
So you have to find out how many people said yes.
We have to find, we have to have-
And then you guys have three days to get it in.
And then, and then we have to vote that day, and then we have, we need several days to put it in, in our, we have to notify PARAC, and then we have two days to put it in for our, for our-
Two weeks to figure this out.
So it's, and, and I'll tell you, most of the cities, a lot of the cities and towns are waiting to the last minute, everybody wants to see what everybody else is doing.
Well, we'll be no different.
So.
But you need to answer by June 27th.
By 9 o'clock.
Yes.
Whether you vote yes, whether you vote no, or whether you don't vote.
Okay.
So we can go from there.
Okay, we will continue on our agenda here because we're, I'm already-
Thank you.
25 minutes late on the first appointment. Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, chief. Okay, 6:15. Change of manager for Prime 101 Restaurant at 101 Point Grove Road from Sonia Davio to Deborah Ann Davio per Mass General Law 138.
Good afternoon.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, this is Alexander Hogan representing Prime Steak House.
Hi, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Great.
Thank you, um, this evening, we're simply proposing, um, Deborah Davio as manager of Prime Steak House in place of the former, um, manager Sonia Davio.
Okay. Hang on a sec, I think I got to open the hearing.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay, I don't want to have to make you redo everything three times. Motion to open the hearing, would someone like to make that motion?
I will make the motion to open the hearing.
Second, Diane Gale.
Okay, motion's made in second, it's a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Great. Do we have the legal ad?
There's no ad, all you have to do is, you know, just read.
Read legal ad, no need to advertise entirely or waive the reading. Okay.
So just read that, like, little paragraph where it says manager.
This one here?
Right.
On this or just?
On the license.
Okay, he's got the license.
On the license, you have the license. Just give it like a brief description of what it is.
So we're going to change the manager from Sonia to, I had the name on there, right, right?
To Deborah Ann.
To Deborah Ann Davio. Do we have any other paperwork that needs to get read in here? Doesn't look like it.
No.
Now we'll recognize, where'd she go? Alex. There you are.
Yes, hello.
Now the floor is all yours.
Thank you, good evening, um, Alexander Hogan representing Prime Steak House. Um, this evening, you have an amendment change of manager application before you, um, to change manager from Sonia Davio to Deborah Ann Davio. Now, Ms. Davio has been, uh, working at the restaurant since the inception of its, uh, grand opening, um, she has had extensive experience as such, and, um, intends to be working 40 hours a week in that position.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the change of manager? Please state your name and address and have at it. Anyone in the room? Big crowd tonight. Anyone, we've got a bigger crowd on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom?
Ms. Davio is in attendance, I think she's muted, if she cares to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, sorry, I could not get myself off mute fast enough, um, but yes, um, I am, uh, interested in, um, bar manager because I do think, uh, keeping the, um, license, um, within the ownership of the, of the restaurant, uh, makes sense, and I do intend to be there, uh, full time, so, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Would anyone like to speak against the change in manager? Seeing no one in the room, anyone on Zoom? General discussion.
If they see the need to change the manager, I'm, I'm-
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that.
Are you tip certified yet?
No, sir, I am not, but I will be, very shortly.
Let's see how that one serves safe.
That's for, tips is for the outlaw. And, um-
We do have a full-time bar manager who manager, who manages the inventory and is a bartender, Deb, is really looking to keep this in the family as liquor license manager,
And you are, sir?
I'm, uh, Dr. Todd Davio.
And your address, sir?
And part owner of the restaurant.
And your address, sir?
Uh, 8360 73rd Court, North Pinellas Park, Florida.
Fantastic, thank you. Diane?
Can I wish?
Okay, I would entertain a motion to grant the change of manager.
I will make that motion to change the grant, or grant the change of manager for the liquor license to Deborah Ann Davio.
Second, Diane Gale.
Motion's made in second, all in favor, Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We need to close it.
Thank you all.
Yeah, we probably should, yeah, we need a motion to close it here.
I'll make the motion to close it here.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
I was plotting my next move here, this is like a chess game. So I, I beg your indulgence, I want to carry the 620 for a little bit, and we'll come right back to it, I promise, and you'll see why in a minute. So, let's acknowledge payroll warrant number 2327 from June 6th in the amount of $301,098.48. Uh, I need a motion for the minutes, uh, can we do an omnibus motion? Sure we can, for the open session and exec session minutes from 6:5. And exec session's coming down, unless you have changes. Okay, then-
I was going to say the same thing.
All right.
Change for sewer IMA, a motion was made by Mrs. Gale, seconded by Mr. Mogul, not Mr. Peron. And last page, executive session, roll call vote was Diane Gale, not Russ Fox.
I also have three of those under meeting discussion items, the motion made to designate you as chair, me as vice chair, and Diane Gale as clerk, and they were all, Mr. Fox is-
So we'll, we'll, I entertain a motion for those as amended, and we'll send those changes and highlighted to Ms. Solak?
Yep, so they are.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make the motion.
Second, Diane Gale.
Okay, Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Can't elbow that far, got a bull eye.
Aye.
Okay, and just send your changes down, if you don't mind, unless you have other notes on there, on the minutes.
I do not.
Okay. Here's that and that. Now we'll make a motion for the exec session if, if there's no changes or as amended.
I did not see that.
Because I get passed out now.
Accidental, my fault.
Okay.
I get passed out at the meeting. Does she need a copy? She, she can have a copy.
I'm all set.
Then we need a motion.
Then I'll make the motion to accept the minutes, I'm sorry, I did not even say-
Second, Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye. I got lost in the confusion.
Motion's made, second roll call.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, invite, invites for COA functions for Benson's Barbecue 614 at Wally Park and the Senior Sizzler on August 8th, it was in your folder, I think I saw some RSVPs and unavailabilities and stuff like that, that's great. Make a note, I better get that hay for Wednesday. All right, uh, approve COLA for Concom CPC Coordinator for fiscal year 2024.
And you did a motion for that?
I do.
I will make a motion to accept that, approve that.
I will second the motion to approve the COLA for Concom CPC Coordinator.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
And Mr. Chairman, that, I believe, you set that at two percent?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, approve updated LOA for Channel 15 Director Stomsky.
I will make the motion to approve the letter of understanding between Town of Southwick and Mr. Stomsky.
Second, Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Authorized Chair to sign MOA with Southwick Police Officer Coalition for Light Duty Assignment.
I will make the motion to allow for the light duty assignment for the chair to sign the MOA.
Second, Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Authorized, this is when it's all going to start to make sense, folks, authorized offer of employment to Kelly Jakem, I hope I said that right.
Yakem.
Yakem, from SPD Reserve Officer to full-time position effective 7/1.
I will make the motion to approve, uh, the transfer from Reserve Officer to Full-Time Officer to Kelly Yakem.
Second, Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Great. Okay, uh, let's just work the rest of the list, then we'll go back to the first item. The reason I did that is I believe she's on the appointment list as a full-time officer, so now that we made that vote, we can now vote the appointment.
Got it.
Accept and approve funds for SPD Underwater ROV, so they, it looks like they received a grant for the ROV, um, for, to provide enhanced controls and capacity to drive the ROV and sonar scan, and a tether cable will allow the sonar scanner deployment separate from the ROV in weedy locations where the weeds are thick and interfere with the ROV's thrusters. This is a, a value of this grant is about $7,319.95, thereabout. So we need a motion to accept and approve the funds.
I will make the motion to accept and approve the funds for the upgrades to the ROV.
Second, Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Excellent, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Sergeant Westcott, um, A for having his son come in front of us last week as a, a call force member of the Fire Department and also working so hard to get this grant. This is on the chair mail, correct? These ones in pink. Accept COA, oh, sorry, select or determine maximum useful life for DPW dump truck for bonding package. Carl, what is our normal vote on this?
Um, well, you're going to say pursuant to the requirements, it's, it's actually right there on the sheet, it says voted that the maximum useful life, so you have it right there. Do you want me to read the vote, or it's in the second paragraph? Which is in a later page, and it's signed by the clerk of the board of select-
It has a blank.
It's signed by the clerk?
Once you take the vote, once the board takes the vote, the clerk, do you, do you have the, uh, page in front of you there?
This is the one from Lock and Lord.
Yes, it's from Bond Council, and it's about six or seven pages into that package.
Yes, I have it.
So what we've done historically is, even though the piece of equipment could last, when we know we're going to get 15 years out of it, um, the financial advisor, Lynn, we've been doing seven-year notes on these trucks, so you'd be, uh, you know, filling in the top part there about what today- So you'd be, uh you know, filling in the top part there about what today's date is on the meeting of today being held. And then the borrowing amount, you know, you know, it's three eighteen and then the maximum useful life, you're gonna put seven years in there. So that's the motion that you want to um.
Okay, so that. So then.
So you want me to read that? You want me to read it?
I think the clerk should read it because she's the clerk that's gonna certify all this.
Voted that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the departmental equipment borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed at the twenty twenty-three Annual Town Meeting held on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Article eight is hereby determined pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-four, Section seven dash one to be as follows, dump truck and plow. Borrowing amount three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. She'll have a maximum useful life of seven years.
Do you need me to make the motion to?
We need a motion for the clerk to sign.
I will make the motion for the clerk to sign to determine the maximum useful life is seven years on the new truck and plow.
I'll second the motion. Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Do I vote that?
Oh, yeah.
Diane Gale, aye. And you want me to sign yours?
And you wanna sign that and I'll send it down and then we did that. All right, now we need to accept a COA donation in the amount of twelve hundred dollars in memory of Roy and Marlene Benson for Benson's Barbecue at Wally Park. I think I saw that. And that is from Robin Wilson and that is a very generous donation, but we need a motion to accept saying.
I will make the motion to accept the donation to the COA for the Benson's Barbecue in memory of Roy and Marlene Benson.
Second Diane Gale.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, Tynick Landscaping LLC Optional Third Year. Carl, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Sutton has recommended that we go forward with exercising this option just as you did last year with the the first year option. So this will be the second year option and this will complete the three-year agreement.
Okay, we would need a motion for that.
I will make the motion to keep Tynick Landscaping LLC for the third year of their contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Roll call vote, Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, now we have a reserve fund transfer in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for legal fees. Legal expenses for board committee support, litigation, M A D E P appeals, Southwick Town Meeting, annual town prep, uh annual town warrant preparation. And what is this? AG Office Parity Study Requirement. Increased utilization to support government function and response to issues and matters arising. Do we need a motion to send this to the make this request of the Finance Committee?
I will make the request of the Finance Committee to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for the legal fees listed.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, and you have a CDBG Program Extension Request to extend it to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Motion made.
What is the extension for? Why do we need to extend?
Because we haven't expended all the money and completed the projects under that project. It's right. Uh I believe it's right in your chair mail tonight.
Okay, second.
One for you, sir.
Okay, Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale.
Oh, thank you. Okay, let's loop back and cover those points. Okay, so these are mostly appointments of the town. Town employees. Carl, do we need to read through each one, correct, to make sure we got this right?
Yeah, sure you can. It's, uh you know, it's all part of the posted agenda.
Correct.
The only thing we could just make note of on two of them is that the under the town accountant one, it says member, I'm not quite sure how that came up. Maybe as if they were part of the Finance Committee Group, but it is town accountant for Laura Fletcher. And I believe under Michelle's that, I know Joe may be in attendance tonight, but I don't believe the chairman of the Board of Assessors was not gonna be available tonight. He'll be in on the twenty-sixth. Because that appointment requires the three select persons and the chairpersons of the FinCom and the Board of Assessors as required of the Special Act of nineteen seventy-one.
That's for the TCC.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
So we'll we will we will hold the TCC in abeyance, but we're gonna run through this real quick as best I can.
Yep.
So Sue Gore as the Director of Assessment, Laura Fletcher as the Town Accountant, DPW Director Randy Brown, DPW Supervisor Richie Bozak, Richard, sorry, Special Assistant to the Director, Richard Grinnell's, Tree Warden and Moth Inspector, that will be a Trivial Pursuit question later, Randy Brown, Chapter one forty-eight Municipal Hearing Officer Carl J. Steinhardt, Parking Ticket Hearing Officer Michelle Hill, Sealer Awaits and Measures Dennis Clark, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds David Sutton, ACO Animal Control Officer Lizanne Bennett, Jeff Brown, Assistant ACO, Building Department. We gotta go through all these, right? Robert Sullivan, Alternate Building Inspector, Arthur Lawler, Alternate Building Inspector Mutual Aid, Stan Stanton Brasca, Alternate Gas and Plumbing Inspector, Glenn Rita, Alternate Gas and Plumbing Inspector, Kyle Scott, Inspector. Isn't he also our building official? Stan Brasca, Gas and Plumbing Inspector, Lou Barelli, Wiring Inspector, Ronald DeeDee, Wiring Inspector, Robert Johnson, Wiring Inspector. We have a vacancy, Joshua Barelli, Alternate Wiring Inspector. Okay, SEMA, are we gonna do that one tonight?
Sure, there's no reason you can't. It's it's not a board or committee, it's an agency.
It is an agency. Okay. So here we are for Southwick Emergency Management Agency, Eric Carroll, Charles Darling, Charles Dunlap, noting that he is no longer going to be the Director effective July first, but he will be a member. Pauline Dunlap, member.
Uh Mr. Chairperson, I believe you had asked him also to uh possibly continue on in that role until you finished your because there is a posting being done through my office in Nadine.
Correct.
So that's still underway and and you know, obviously that won't be finished by the end of the month.
Very well. Josh, no, I'm on the wrong guy. Pauline Dunlap, member, Keith Stromgren and Ian White. And then the Community Emergency Response Team, Eric Carroll, Charles Darling, Charles Dunlap, Pauline Dunlap, Keith Stromgren, Ian White. Races, Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service. Stop me if you've heard this before. Eric Carroll, Charles Darling, Charles Dunlap, Pauline Dunlap, Keith Stromgren, Ian White. Police Chief, Southwick Police Department, Robert Landis. Police Officers, Rhett Banish, Bradford Fisk, Thomas Crookka, Paul Miles, Matthew Olson, Roger Ardweeny, Michael Bridges, Gregory Burt, Ernest Malone, Garrett Parker, Kelly Miller. Kelly?
Yakim.
Thank you.
Yakim.
Kyle Sanders, Mark Siegel, Andrew Smith, Michael Taggart, Michael Westcott, Daniel McClellan. Reserve Officers Jeremiah Kane, Michael Gerard, Gregory Priest, Kyle Allen, Donald Day, Alejandro Sanchez, Thomas Shea, Kevin Hannah. School Crossing Guard Sean Angel. Traffic Control Officers Kevin Bishop, Robert DeLuca, Rose Hannah, Anthony Malone and James Frenette. Getting there, kids. Fire Department, Fire Chief, spelling correction on that one, Richard Stefanowitz. We got Stefanowitz right, we got Richard wrong. Career Members Jessica Bishop, Carolyn Bradbury, Joshua Gerard, Brian Schneider, Elizabeth Carolides, Brandon Patwayne, sorry, Brandon, Stephen Backman, Michael Marifuga, Forest Fire Warden, also Richard Stefanowitz. Firefighters slash EMT, these are call members, I believe. Matthew Drennan, Matthew Barden, Tyler Buscemi, Greg Condon, Dennis Day, Badge One, Timothy Mannion, David Matzuk, Anthony Siegel, Stephen Shaw, Cooper Smith, Aaron Sherlin, Ryan Tedesco, Michael Macchio, Jessica Merluzi, Nicholas Chambers, Lisa Anderson, Anthony Angada, Eric Brogan, David Dubchak, Nicholas Hope, Devon Drew Niani, sorry, Scott Saint Martin, Julia S., Juan Rivera and the tall kid, Clark Robinson. Call Force Officers Christopher Garvey, Patrick Hope, Brandon Johnson, Christopher Macchio, Ian Hurley, David Humphrey, uh sorry, and these are support members, David Humphrey and Paul Johnson and Pastor Dan Valeri. I need a motion, please, to accept all of the names as I read or butchered here.
I will make a motion.
I think you missed Dan Valeri, but.
I went back and got him as the pastor.
Okay, good, okay.
I did hear that one. Uh the motion is made.
Second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Was there any other chair mail I need to get through or we did it all the best we could? I think we did. Okay. New Business, Select Board Corporate Members with Rotary. Carl, we just, do we just appoint two people to be on the Rotary?
Well, I I think that, you know, the three of you should discuss that all three of you want to do it. I mean, we've had members in the past that wanted to do it and we've had members in the past that didn't want to do it. So now would be the time to know so that we can inform the Rotary officials whose name they'll need to have for emails and telephone so that they can get thirty texts a week.
I said, you will live to regret it. Uh but no, you should really do it. It's worthwhile. Um we are a corporate member of Rotary and the original idea behind that was that uh different members from the Select Board and other departments in town would attend Rotary meetings and functions to kind of bring that group up to speed with what's going on in town and work with them on certain programs and activities. They meet twice a month, I think, and they send, I don't know, six to seven hundred texts a week. No, I'm kidding. It's not that many. It's probably just only four hundred um around the scheduling of their meetings and I'm kidding, of course, but you know, we've can, I believe we renewed, so I think that should be the way to do it. My opinion is that's the way to do it is kind of divide and conquer and not have one person on this board be the Rotary designated and just go to all the meetings or not go to any meetings depending. So.
And they're having their summer, their summer schedule of concerts too, so that'd be a good way for all the board members to go up there and be part of something and introduce themselves.
I see a hand back there.
Why is it just the Rotary? Joe DeeDee, two, five, eight, three, nine, those roads. I mean, the Lions Club does a great job too. Why don't you guys join them to keep them up to date in what's happening?
We have more money than they have.
Well, good. We we go where we're invited.
You're always invited to a Lions meeting first Thursday every month at Tucker's. I miss my guest, your meal will be paid for.
Wow, I think I'll have to pay for my own meal just out of all appearances.
Oh, it's under fifty dollars. Don't worry.
It's a, well, you know, I thank you, though, and that's a great, a great idea. And you know, we do do that. I we chose a few years ago to join as a corporate member for the the Rotary and you know, I've gone to several meetings over my tenure and literally it's a handful. And you know, they're very, it's informative. They usually ask a lot of questions. You learn a lot. They they put on the Rotary Concert Series and everything else too. So you know, uh we'll get you if if it's amenable to you guys, we'll get you you know, the information, your information to them so that they can let you know when the meetings are and so on and so forth. And all kidding aside, we did ask Carl and Carl and I have asked them to tone down the frequency of the texting because it does get a little onerous.
They like trivia night at the Real Trail Islands, I've noticed that.
So then among the three of us, we hit their functions and.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, of course, and then, you know, we usually attend a meeting and we just try not to, just because we can't be in we we really, because they will ask stuff that's in front of your board, so we just try not to go to the meetings in pairs, right? But um worth it. Okay. NRCS Preliminary Report for LMC for Congamon Lake. If anybody took in the LMC meeting the other night.
Yep.
Interesting take on that, that as I as I understood it, I think we should probably have Dr. Mueller come back in front of us again or or someone to kind of explain it a little more, but seemed like they were proposing dredging the lake and they came back with adding a new outlet to the lake.
Kind of like dredging half the town.
Yeah, and then, by the way, you've got to widen everything between here and, I don't know, where was it? The Tappan Zee Bridge, apparently, to to make the water flow, right? Yeah. So it was kind of a weird turn of events to that, but um.
Well, now that you bring up the issue dredging, uh the Senator was in our office today and Diane was with him and his staff. And we did talk about issues that are important for Southwick, which, you know, touched upon the lakes as one of those topics and the important thing in the past where we've tried to advocate for securing a regional program for dredging so that no one community would own the equipment, but it would be done through a state agency and then that agency would possess and house the equipment and take it from lake to lake, especially in Western Massachusetts where the needs are for dredging exist.
I thought that was milfoil equipment that they were gonna do.
No, this is also, I think dredging is also an issue. That's also an issue.
Because it's the permitting process is almost as daunting as the actual dredging process and what you do with the dredged material, though ours is apparently fantastic stuff from what.
Right, ours is, ours is in in demand.
Nutrient-riches, they say.
Yes. So if we are gonna bring in Dr. Mueller, we can find out more about this program and what's going on here.
Fantastic. So we can carry this under old business?
Sure.
There was no response deadline to any of this, perhaps?
I know they had applied for federal, you know, they've been looking for federal funding for this and I did, that's a complete right turn. A complete right turn.
Diane, if you if you look at the the email that just came in to us, at the bottom of that first page, it says the town needs to get back to NRCS with our aggregate comments on that P I F R by six eighteen twenty-three.
That's six days from now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I love how we get these things at the last minute.
Forty years in the making and we got a week to reply.
Exactly.
Well, I've read through it, but I don't have enough comments other than, I mean, I think the dredging of where the existing outlets of of the brooks are, the natural outlets of the brooks plus the constructed outlet that was already existing should be primary targets of dredging rather than adding a new outlet from the lake, which required significant, significant downstream new downstream work. I mean, we'd come all the way to rail trail, all, you know.
And not just that, if these things, if these issues.
I'm sorry, Carl.
If these issues are gonna affect other communities, you you don't do this lightly. You have to be involved in understanding what you think you want to accomplish within your own community and then you have to do the outreach and the coordination and you have to align these other communities with the issue and that and that may have to be facilitated by the people that oversee this federal program so that everybody understands the bigger picture of what they're trying to accomplish and how that affects all the communities affected along the way, you know, until the water is discharged.
That seemed like you just wrote our response, Carl, since it's due in six days.
Well, it's like, we'll tell them it's not gonna be six days and we still need to have Dr. Miller. Dr. Mueller come, Mueller come in and go over it.
Okay. Any other new business, Mr. Carl?
Well, aside from the fact that we did meet with the state senator today, we did go over other issues that would be important to the town, like trying to secure funds for, you know, roads, infrastructure, tourism also came up. Diane had some ideas to go over with them, so there are other things going forward, trying to make sure that we have become part of a stronger rural caucus. As you recall, we had that discussion at the Mass Municipal Meeting last year with a bunch of other communities and the new Secretary of, you know, Rural Affairs is gonna be part of that process, so I would imagine at some point we would like to have that individual also come up and visit with us in our community. And the Senator does want to have a tour around the community at some point, a more in-depth tour.
We can take him on the road trip while we do the roads.
Oh, boy.
We did talk about roads.
Right. So that's it for myself, sir.
And that, too.
And if we get the money, we bring him back to shore.
There you go.
Kidding. New Business, Diane?
Yes, on the agendas, we probably all know it, but some people who join us remotely or try to, they try to click on the link on the live thing. I would suggest that we just put a comment in there to copy and paste it, like I said, we all probably know how to do that, copy and paste this into your browser if the link doesn't get you there, and just add that to everybody's agendas because it's not just Select Board that gets that complaint, so.
It's been great over the last several months.
Um, people still have some problems, last week somewhere.
Because I, I usually just use, do that method to join the meetings here, just to make sure that.
I skip the link.
Well, I do it just to make sure that it works, then I know it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
If it doesn't, so that's why I was saying it's for the last several months, it's been good, not a bad idea, though, to add it.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you've got certain language that, how it needs to read, bring that language into Robin, please.
Yep, will do. Two other quick things, as you know, I have for a long time been posting kind of public service awareness kind of things, all of our scheduled open meetings on all the Southwick forums on Facebook, sharing news articles, I do that without comments, without commentary, editorializing, I just copy paste the articles, I paste the agendas and the link to the meetings. I just want to know that that is still okay with you, too, that I continue to do that as a private person, just letting the people know what's, what meetings are going on.
I have no problem with that, sometimes I use it myself.
I, I have no objection, I just want to let you know that, that if, Jason and I cannot acknowledge even your posting because even if we went to a meeting on this, even if we click like, that's a violation of open meeting law, which is, it's draconian and not up with the times, but that's a fact, so take no offense.
Yep, nope, well, I, I'm assuming you know where our meetings are, so.
And now Jason, and now Jason does, too.
I wasn't talking about our meetings.
I know where to look for them, at least, and then if you are okay with it, I would also post the expiring terms and vacancies of our boards and commissions and put the link to each of those boards and commissions with them so people can peruse the duties of those boards as another, as a separate kind of awareness thing.
No objection.
And, and your link to the new online form.
Yep, I was gonna cover that under old, but yes, sir, perfect.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with that? I will carry on with that, and that was it for me.
I have nothing, I've been chasing around the aggregation and just kind of following up on everything that's under old business.
Great.
Plus I've been dealing with this and a few other things, so.
Okay, old business, North Pond violations, is there any updates for that right at this moment?
I would have to ask the lieutenant.
Ree, Lieutenant?
Sorry, I was trying to get the speaker to come back on.
Any, any updates on North Pond?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of, you've seen the fence and everything down there. I drive by it at least twice a day, things look quite under control, we still have very no parking signs down there, no issues on that end, so I think we're in pretty good shape at this point.
Okay. Sewer System I M A with the city of Westfield?
Did you receive the email from Mr. Steinhardt?
I did.
Right, I believe the board was gonna designate another individual to just finish that issue off, which may just only even be a Zoom call with the town attorney and the staff.
I would absolutely recommend I do that.
Okay, I think we should probably move. Thanks, Carl. I think that's a motion, does someone want to second that motion?
That was a legitimate motion, right?
I will make that motion to designate.
I will second the motion to designate Mr. Mogul.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gail, aye.
Any marijuana updates this week?
None this week, that I get, anyway.
Don't see any updates on speed limits and deer run this week?
Nope.
Muni aggregation?
Uh, we're still waiting for a scope of services document from Beth Greenblatt, so, you know, I, I anticipate something in the next week or two from her.
Okay. Flag policy, we do have an update on that.
Yes, we do, sir, that came through Attorney Coyle today, again, he's just catching up after town meeting, so I don't know, I mean, obviously he's changed some of it, so I don't know if you want to, you know, look at it and consider this, let's see, you've already done one reading of it, so I don't know if you want to either make this the second reading or just everybody review his edits.
Why don't we carry that for next week to, or, or meeting next week, correct?
No.
No.
No, it's a holiday.
So we will meet in two weeks and we will carry this and, and consider that the second reading, I'll give the board time to review it again, I read it today, it looked about exactly what we talked about previous, but.
Did you, did you want, Mr. Chairperson, did you want to have this document, this is the edited version, the marked up one, did you want to have a finished clean, unmarked one for that meeting?
Please.
Okay.
Okay. Select Board Goals and Objectives. This was a, I saw it was in our file for the ones from March and then there was a couple subsequent ones, previous ones, so.
I had just asked for that.
Yep, but with the reorganization of the board and recomposition of the board, I think we should carry this to the next meeting and kind of, and we kind of revisited every meeting, but let's kind of have a better look at it and set some time up for that. And I'd also like to, Carl, with your indulgence, I'd like to discuss that we should probably start putting on to this, the goals and objectives is what is going to be the process when the time comes to replace, yeah, a C A O recruitment process and what that would look like and what, you know, as a board, we should probably discuss what that should look like with your input as well, just from, you know, general feedback on the process.
Sure, I wholeheartedly agree with that, Mr. Chairman, in fact, I, you know, obviously the other major one you'll need to carry on there is the Chief of Police.
Yep, we're kind of, we're kind of hoping he's gonna make an announcement when, when, you know, with enough time to do that, like we kind of had in the la, with the last chief, but yes, kind of should put that on the radar as well.
So do you want me to, do you want me to put that on a draft or do you want me to hold off on that?
Might hold off on that one, but I think the C A O recruitment, because it's, it is kind of a little different because of the nature of the position and, and, and how.
In the organizational chain of command.
Correct, so I mean, you don't normally, you're gonna put, I don't want to discuss it too much tonight, we're gonna carry this for next week, but how do you, how do you organize that committee, right, you, I don't know that you put too many department heads on it because you're actually hiring their boss, I, you know, it's kind of an interesting,
Yeah.
interesting thing to think about and talk about.
Well, I, I think you'll find that there probably are some tutorials that have been recorded by the M M A about how these processes work.
Correct. But we should start having that discussion.
You know, and since we have three active members of the Mass Selectment Association, I'm sure we'll be able to help them gain more information and insight from their peer association and listeners.
Correct. Yeah, I think that was what he was trying to.
It was touched on at training last week.
He's subtle, that, Carl. Do we have exact session tonight, Carl?
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Old Business Mail?
Yeah.
Uh, just to follow up on the Southwick Civic Fund Request for Parade, I did speak to Darcy Rock, she is having her meeting on 6/20 and then the, that's the American Legion and the V F W on 6/22, she will discuss it with her board of members and then get back to me hopefully on 6/23 or very soon thereafter, and we can come back together on that.
Robin, can we carry that on old business, please? More?
That's it.
Okay, Jason?
Nope, not tonight.
Carl, do we have exact session tonight?
No, because the, you know, the issue with the, one of the bargaining units isn't gonna pan out, so that's going in a different direction and the chief and I spoke about it today and it, at this point in time, it's, makes sense to wait to a future date.
Okay. And then, I think that's it, then. I don't want to talk about the other thing because I don't know if it's exact session or not, so we'll just leave it. Anything else before we go?
Two weeks off.
Nope, do you want a motion?
I would love a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gail, aye.